Sorry for the delay. I thought it was much earlier than what it was. So it is the Tuesday, June 27th, 2023, Old Town Hall, regular public meeting and hearing. The Zoom information for tonight's meeting, the link is provided on the agenda. Meeting ID is 744-646-2815. Passcode is 651342. And the phone number to call in for Zoom is 305-224-1968. And note, this is the revised agenda. The original agenda was posted on 6/7/23 at 11:00 a.m. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the Constitution, which stands on the nation, on the God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First order of business is to confirm the next meeting date, which according to our calendar would be July 25th. Does that work for everybody on the board?
Works for me, Mr. Chairman.
That that date not work for?
Zach, did you hear me, Jonathan?
Yep.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it does work for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Marguerite, should you need at that meeting, would that work for you?
It does not, actually, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any business items that on the agenda today, I guess, Dyton Homes, Dyton Woods, maybe, would maybe would want her to be there if that gets continued?
I believe there's a request, there's going to be a request to continue Dyton Woods. I think they had talked about July. I did let them know I couldn't do July. I could do a meeting in August. I know sometimes you've taken the month of August off. I don't know. You wanted to switch that.
Doesn't matter to me, taking August off. I mean, I don't know how the board feels, but...
Whatever you want to do.
I mean, we meet one, one, Wednesday of the month. I don't think we need to have a month off per se, unless we had vacations or anything scheduled for that week, but, um, so I guess when we go to, we can either skip July, if there's nothing else that needs to be on July's agenda, or we can just meet in July anyway and continue them to August. Do we have anything else coming up for July?
As of right now, no.
Okay.
I don't have anything on the agenda as of yet.
Okay, then.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
So if there was something here that we...
On tonight, yeah, tonight's agenda, so Stonegate Landing or...
Or Ferrera Development Group, or any of these Dyton Homes if we continue.
So yeah, good point. So any of the applicants for tonight, the Stonegate Landing or the Ferrera Development Group, would August be okay? That that date in August, that would put us on August, uh, 29th?
22nd or 29th?
No, it's the last, the last Wednesday, right? The last Tuesday.
Oh, we're doing Tuesdays now.
Tuesdays.
Yes.
The last or the fourth? It's the fourth.
So that would be the 25th.
Of, of July?
Of July.
Right, and then, or it'd be August?
August 20...
1, 2, 3, it would be August 22nd.
Wait a second. So would that work for anyone?
You said July, I...
July, July or the August one? So if you choose...
25th, that would be fine.
Okay, so one...
What?
Wait a second, so...
Yes. That actually... Oh, I'm sorry. Are we not in July? I just heard July.
I think that's what they're...
We're trying to decide now, because even if we don't meet in August, and if this group, the group, the Dyton Homes, we would be continuing them to the next meeting, which would be July 25th, but they can't make that meeting, so they would have to meet in August.
What would the date be in August?
22nd.
22nd.
Would that be a tough date for me? In July would be the better day.
Okay, so we'll keep both meetings then?
Okay.
We'll do that then.
It's just Attorney Mitchell is not available for the July date.
No.
Okay.
So, so we'll tell Dyton Homes they'll have to be the August meeting, and then we'll, I mean, we'll keep our July one as scheduled.
But if Marguerite can't be here, is there an alternative date on that week that works here?
Can't do those, the last two weeks of July.
Last two weeks of July. So we'll just make sure that any cases requiring Marguerite will not be on that date, but we'll still meet anyway for cases that don't require her to be here.
But Mr. Fredericks had stated that the date in August wouldn't work for him, and if his tape, if his hearing gets continued, Marguerite needs to be here.
Not necessarily.
Possibly, but, all right. So we'll leave the August.
I'm gonna address that maybe when you get to that point.
At a later date.
Okay, so, so we'll keep the July. So we'll, we'll confirm then that the next meeting date is July 25th.
Okay.
And then, so we'll go down to the first business item agenda, public hearing, Stonegate Landing LLC, West Lee Side of Somerset, Mass., Ave., Somerset Ave., map nine, modification of comprehensive permit. And we have here a piece of correspondence from Lorraine Rosie, I assume is the attorney for Federoff. Do you want to just come up and address that first you can?
Good morning. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. I am here mostly for my monthly report of what we've been doing over there to, to get phase one on the, to where it should be, okay? And I, in the packet, I, I sent in first a, some pictures about the one-way coming in, and I'd like you to look at it.
There any specific you want, you want to talk about these pictures, or?
No, I took the pictures just, because they can speak more. It's as easy as me trying to explain, but in, in the first picture, so there was that driveway coming from about the, about her on that road.
Yep.
And they had it out three feet into the roadway. So we went out there last week, and we saw cut it, cleaned it up. We did put some stone in so they could still get in the driveway till we decide what to do with that part of it. But, so I did that. It makes it a clear shot down now. We put in three speed bumps. I added two speed bump signs, and on the, the side from the project going back to Somerset, I already had one do not enter sign, and we put up another one, and, and we've been policing it. And, of course, I can't be there all day, but there's a dramatic drop of people leaving the project and going out on Somerset Avenue, okay? I did have to stop and wave a few people back. It's not perfect yet, but I think over time, and that's gonna, I believe, relieve all the congestion going on to 138. It was always designed to be a one-way in, and, but for Canadians, people who live, most of the people who live down that end of the Stonegate right now, it's just so much easier to shoot out. And I did have speed bumps there three, four, five years ago, but I just put them in. We set, put them in the center of the road. There's no way, because the road's so narrow, even though the speed bump's only six feet, the roadway's 14, so there's no way to go without driving over the speed bump. And I'm hopeful that'll be enough. We're still waiting, we still have our application with DOT. You know, I think there's not an issue at all, once I get approved to lower the, the churn in. I think we maybe raise the catch basin at the end of the road, and we can blend it in and create a bigger radius. And I've tried a couple times to call, to talk to the homeowner that lives on the right driving in, who has those two big boulders in the road, and I'm gonna ask him permission just to take them out of there, because that creates a blind spot if you come and sell. And at least 80% of the boulders are not on this property. They're on the state highway. So I have the plan that shows that. I've been trying to get a meeting with him, and I, he's been away, but I, I don't imagine there's any reason to keep him there. It'll make it much safer in the section.
I have one question on the pictures. Is that a stop sign facing the wrong way?
Uh, the stop sign is here.
Yeah, so that...
The stop sign, so we pull it to stop before we drive in.
That's not the wrong way. Because the cars going this way have a do not enter, but they can go out. So the stop sign, it's the car's going this way.
And that's way, way before 138 then?
Yes.
Oh, yes, way before.
So when everything's very visible from, from 138, you can, you see the, uh, the road bumps, what are those?
Speed bumps.
And from the street, and you know it before you ever turn in. So that's, you know, I think's going well, and I'm, I'm hopeful we can get what we need from DOT before the weather gets bad, and I mean, at least lower the first 50 feet of the road, give it wider radiuses, and I think the problem will go away. Okay? The second thing I wanted to bring you up is on the playground, okay? We're looking pretty good. Um, we, we've, we've removed all the, the weeds and grass and, 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 I think, we've just cleaned up the whole playground. We checked the fence to make sure it was safe. There's a large green picnic table in there that we had a professional painter come in and paint it, along with two benches. And the only thing we got left to do, I think, is I, I want to, and this will be, if not this week, Monday or Tuesday, next week, is to power wash all the swings, the slides, everything, and remove any, anything that might be on them. Was it when, you know, and, and then do one more safety check, and then I'm gonna request that, notify Parks and Recreation and the building superintendent, Jim Agua, and ask them if they'd come out and inspect it for me, just to make sure Parks and Rec are good, Mr. Agua is good, and then we can open.
Have you talked to the insurance, like you were talking about?
Yeah, well, that will, that should, they should be out next week, okay? So I think it'll all come together at one time, because I have to have it mint for the insurance company too. And I just want to, uh, what goes, yeah, the equipment needs to be cleaned a little bit and whatever, and so we're gonna wash it with that bright green stuff and, and check every bolt, and then I'll be ready for everybody. But I thought it would be, it would be good to have Parks and Rec and the building inspector and the insurance company to make sure everything's okay.
So you're gonna be doing the insurance, and then once the project's over and they get a homeowners association, they'll be taking it off of them. Right now, you'll be covering your own insurance on this until then?
Well, I'm gonna, Stonegate Landing, so, so the policy would be the Stonegate Landing for the benefit of the homeowners and who, who's to pay down the road. We'll figure that out. Just get the playground open.
Okay.
Okay? And the third thing I wanted to talk to you about is that I have reached out to Green Affiliates, the engineering company, Green International, and I talked to one of their project manager, who's also a PE, and he specializes in roadway and, and drainage systems, and we've been talking back and forth, and we decided the best way to handle it would be to get everybody out to the project, and he agreed to come down, and obviously, it's at my cost, on July 6th at 9:30 in the morning. I made Tom Ferry aware of that, and he agreed he'd like to be there as well. And I would just invite any of you that are here, if you're in the neighborhood, on July 6th, that's the Thursday, and you'd just like to come see, because I think the more eyes we get on it, the more we can get it moving faster, and that's what I'd prefer to have done. Okay?
So also somewhat related to, to this project or this agenda item, we have a letter here from Lorraine Rosie, sent off to yourself and then Marguerite, our attorney, and the board members. This was on June 27th, 3:32 p.m. Tuesday, saying, "Good afternoon, all. As you know, I represent Able Landing LLC relative to the application to transfer the comprehensive permit as it relates to parcel B (back parcel) of Stonegate Landing. Able LLC through its agent Paul Cousin of Delphic Associates is advised that the board has indicated on numerous occasions that it will not consider the request to transfer the permit to LLC until and unless the various outstanding issues involving Mr. Federoff, Stonegate Landing LLC, and parcel A, the front parcel, have been resolved to the board's satisfaction. As such, Able and LLC has not attended any scheduled meetings as they relate to Stonegate Landing's outstanding issues. Able LLC will therefore sit in abeyance until Mr. Federoff satisfies his obligations relative to parcel A, and the board is ready to consider Able LLC's request to transfer the permit relative to parcel B. If the board will not continue to hold the request in abeyance until parcel A issues are evolved, have resolved, Able Landing LLC respectfully requests the application to transfer the permit to be withdrawn without prejudice. Immediately upon Mr. Federoff's resolution of the outstanding issues with parcel A, Able Landing LLC will again request that the permit be transferred to its relative, uh, relative to parcel B. Thank you for consideration. Lorraine Rosie, Esquire." So as we discussed last meeting, we talked about how if they weren't going to continue to appear for these meetings, we were either going to take a vote, as we are in our right to do, close the public hearing, and make a vote based on the application in front of us. They, we have sent that message to them, and they have decided if we're not going to continue, which I'm not going to vote to continue this anymore, they said that they would like to withdraw without prejudice. So that being said, the voting members would need to take a vote to accept their...
Are there any voting members on this particular case that we need to keep?
That we need to keep? Well, if they, if they withdraw without prejudice, it would be three new voting, it wouldn't, it could be three new voting members. It'd be treated like a whole new case at that point. So it wouldn't like whoever is here tonight would have to be here for that meeting, because it would be three new, it could be coincidentally the same three, but it won't, it doesn't have to be. It'll be treated like a brand-new case.
All right, so Jonathan, your clerk, you want to pick three members?
Well, we have to vote, we have, we don't need...
We don't have three members.
Right. We don't need three members yet. We need to wait till we have a new case. So we just need the three voting members of this case to vote to accept their withdrawal.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept their withdrawal.
Sorry. The three voting members right now are Zach Karen, David Phillips, and Susan Pritchard.
You want to make a motion? Make a motion, you want to tell her what you want her to say?
We would need it, we would, I would like to enter in a motion that we withdraw, we would accept their withdrawal without prejudice for this case.
I make a motion that we accept their withdrawal without prejudice on this case.
So moved.
All's in favor? Aye. Okay. So we can notify them that we've accepted...
I'm sorry, because he's on Zoom, we gotta do roll call.
So yeah, because we do have one member on Zoom, we have to do a roll call vote. So you have to say your name after your vote.
Susan Pritchard, aye.
Greg Logan, aye.
David Phillips, aye.
Zachary Karen, aye. Okay, so now we can go down. You're all set?
But I'll be back, so put me on the agenda just to come in for updates.
Sure.
Okay, don't take me off.
So you'll have something from Green Engineering.
What's that?
When you come back, you'll have some information from Green Engineering.
Yeah, I just...
Tom Ferry will probably write a letter saying that that was, that what he went to...
Yeah, it's gonna be July, so I just want to keep the ball rolling.
I still see the playground's locked, so hopefully by next meeting that we can have all those other things resolved, and we could probably get the locks off, but that's the end of July.
I think we should have the meeting right inside the playground.
Well, that's not the point.
You know, get the lights, ooh, make it work.
Just wanted the kids to be able to use it before it becomes too cold to use it, you know. It's been going off for months. So I know you're working on it. I hope that we can have all that resolved for the next meeting.
Sounds great.
All right, thanks.
Chairman, Lorraine's dad at Lowe's.
That's the guy you told me.
Yeah. I looked, I said, "Dude."
Yeah.
But we chatted at, at Lowe's. Get out of the house for a couple hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's good for every memory.
It is, it is.
All right, thank you all. Thank you.
All right, going on to the next item agenda. We have Ferrera Development Group LLC, 907 Center Street, map 13, lot 51, special permit application. John, we'll need three voting members. Are there any members on the board that would feel the need, that they need to abstain from being a voting member on this case due to any kind of conflict of interests?
Does my grandmother working at the nursing home mean anything?
Marguerite? This isn't the nursing home, this is the development.
It was. It's nothing to do with it now. I was just making a joke. No.
Three members would be myself, Greg, and Zach.
Okay, so the first thing we'll do is gonna read the notice as it appears in the newspaper as published. We have, "Notice is hereby given. The Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals will consider a public hearing at Old Town Hall 1111, Somerset Ave., Massachusetts on Tuesday, June 27th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. on the special permit application of Ferrera Development Group LLC for the property located at 907 Center Street, being shown as access map lot 13, oh, sorry, map 13, lot 51 pursuant to sections 2420, 2422, 2430, 2432, and 2460, non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures other than single and two-family structures, and abandonment or non-use of the Titan, of the town of Dyton zoning by law in order to convert formerly used nursing home to an apartment building containing nine single-bedroom units and convert the garage into a one-two-bedroom apartment. Any persons interested or wishing to be heard at this, on this matter should attend, attend this hearing. Copies of the application are available in the Dyton Zoning Board Appeals Boarding, Zoning Board Appeals Office, and the Dyton Zoning Board Appeals website, or upon request can be viewed by email by calling 508-669-6431, extension 114, or emailing kateystudy@dytonmass.gov." So whenever you are ready, you may come on and present your case.
Good evening. My name is Attorney Robert Fredericks. I have an office in Dyton. I'm also a Dyton town resident. With me is my client, Steve Ferrera, who's seated in the white polo shirt. With him is also his wife, Nicole, his daughter Riley, and his uncle Ed. Did I get all the family? Okay, good. That was probably the most nerve-wracking part of this. So Mr. Ferrera is the applicant, okay? He is Ferrera Development, and I think I, anytime I try to do anything, I'd like to try to provide at least a little bit of a background. So he's been in real estate development. He's from Taunton. He's been doing real estate development for about 28 years. He's an established person with a track record of doing things the right way. We have some letters if you wish to see them, but of note, he has approximately 45 rental units consisting around 15 buildings. He also has a number of commercial properties. He is currently housing, well, he owns the building where the Taunton area Chamber of Commerce has its office. So again, they're one of the people who've offered a, a letter in reference to who Mr. Ferrera is and how he handles his properties. He's a very experienced person in rentals. He has full-time maintenance crews. He has landscapers and licensed subcontractors that all work for him. He himself is a licensed contractor, okay? He is also somebody who firmly believes in establishing business plan when he, when he gets involved in these sorts of projects. He has a way of doing things, okay? And that includes background checks for anybody who rents from him, one-year leases, and also credit checks. And I point all that out right from the start, because I think it's always important that you understand who the applicant is in this case. He has, in the past, done some special projects, sober houses in Freetown, Lakeville. He's recently renovated a garage, which is Aziz, in, it's in Taunton? Yep. So he's, he's diversified now to this point. In this particular case, what happened, I, I think you all know, it's the old Dyton nursing home. You're familiar with the property. The old Dyton nursing home sits on Center Street at the intersection, almost the intersection of Center Street and Middle Street. That property was a nursing home for a very, very long time. The app, the permit for that property to operate as a nursing home expired in July 31st about 2019. There was a foreclosure on the property. My client bought the property in September of 2022. That deed is actually attached to the materials that we submitted. At, at that point, my client, you know, of course, he's now owns a piece of real estate, and the, the question is, what can he do with it? So he did some investigation. He started trying to determine what its applicable uses could be, and more particularly, how it could meet the needs of the community of Dyton. What he came to the conclusion of, and which is undeniable, is there's no rental units in the town of Dyton. So he started kind of trying to see, in dealing with the property, what should he do? How should he configure it? And that's where he came to the floor plans that we've submitted to you. And the floor plans are designed mainly to not only meet the needs of housing, but also to minimize the impact on town services. Obviously, multiple bedrooms would, would include in it children, okay? The burden on the Dyton school system is obviously fairly significant right now, as far as the, it's, I, I, years ago, doing, Mr. Logan, you may remember, the apartment project I was involved in, first day, first meeting, what the schools said. Schools said, "We're at capacity," and nothing has substantially changed in increasing the capacity of the schools. So in reviewing the project and trying to see how it meets the town, that was one of the concerns we had. If you add bedrooms, you add kids, you add kids, you add the burden to the town. That's not what the idea was. So in, in this, we decided to look at a model of one-bedroom apartments mainly. We do have the two-bedroom unit, which is the garage, which is outside, and again, I, I think in the backdrop of where we are in the, in the, I'm, I'm sure this board's very well aware of some of the things that are going around the MTA and some of those sorts of things, they're now requiring basically apartments in a lot of communities. That railway, you know, it's, it's a significant change to a lot of towns. And that's this, you know, town of Dyton, we just simply don't have that sort of inventory right now. So we thought this project would make sense for this town. Speaking to the building itself, it's a very, very large building. It used to be a 30-bed nursing home, okay? So a lot, a lot of capacity. That's important, because the property, as we took it on, is very well engineered for what's much less of a bedroom count. The septic system, for instance, was designed, and is, we have engineer letters, letters from the engineer, basically saying that, yep, it's designed for way over capacity, because this was designed for 30 bedrooms, okay? And now, where we're trying to take it down, it's, it's going to be well capable of managing anything that we put in there. But again, we didn't, we weren't concerned. We're trying to maximize the occupancy of the septic system. We continue to try to make sure that we're meeting not just what he wants to do with the property, but also what's good for the town. The prior use, obviously, was in non-conformity. There's, there's no debate about that. It was a nursing home in a residential area. So that brings us to a situation where we have a non-conforming structure and a non-conforming use at the time that the nursing home is in operation. At, going through this process, I, I've discussed this matter with the zoning enforcement officer, and the, the, the way that we decided to proceed was basically in conjunction with his advice. So we filed for the special permit, and the special permit standard is basically a special permit may be granted for uses which are in harmony with the general purposes or, and intent of the ordinance and the bylaws. So in looking at that, and if you start looking at the fact that it's in a residential area, residential use made the most sense to us, not trying to turn it into, to anything but somebody living there. It's also non-conforming, so then again, this, this board must now look at the non-conforming part of it and realize that when we are speaking of non-conformities, we may not exacerbate the non-conformity. The whole idea would be to hopefully make it less detrimental than it was previous. In our opinion, 10, 10 units of rental is going to be a lot less of an impact on the community and particularly that neighborhood than a 30-bedroom nursing home. You're not gonna have visitors going in and out. You're not gonna have staff. It's gonna obviously be a lot less motor vehicle traffic. So we feel as though we do meet the standard for the lessening of the non-conformity, and we also, again, feel like there's other great benefits to the town. When my client bought the property at the foreclosure, he had to pay about $30,000-ish ballpark, $80,000. Okay, much worse. $80,000 in back taxes. So of course, that was a, a boom to the town. The town is still currently taxing it at a commercial rate, so it's still on the books as a commercial property, and by using it as rental units, the town could continue to so tax it. So they would continue to realize all of that tax revenue in a town that, again, I mean, we all know, doesn't have a lot of commercial properties. There's, I believe, some comments, I'm not sure I spoke, I spoke with the clerk, that there's, there's no septic impact here. There's no water impact, so we're not, again, we're not burdening any of the utilities. And the, really, again, if you think about it, what a nursing home would do for your fire and your police and your ambulance as to what the impact would be of just rental units, we again would suggest we're going to minimize whatever impacts that the, that would have happened that are now gonna happen. that the, that would have happened that are now going to happen. So, um, we, we also, I, in talking with my client, I got a very unusual client. I've been doing this for a fairly long time. You don't get a lot of people like him. And his thing has been trying to make the project good for the town, but also for the abutters. He's very mindful of the fact that there's people living there. And that's why he really wanted me to stress how he'd be renting these things, that he does his due diligence, that he does the background checks, the credit checks. This isn't going to be a flop house or a Section 8 thing. That's not what he does, okay? He's going to rent this to people who, you know, hopefully are, you know, coming up in the world, can't afford a house. Because most, if you look around, I mean, I represent a lot of people. They can't buy a house in town, Dayton. You know, they'll, they'll look, they'll come to me, I'm a licensed real estate broker. They'll try to buy a house here first and then end up buying in Taunton. Because the price of a house in Dayton is a lot higher than it is in Taunton. So you give avenues here to folks who want to live in this town who may not otherwise be able to purchase a home. And with that, he's obviously acknowledging, bringing that to a situation where people already have their homes. He needs to make sure he ensures their privacy is cared for. He needs to make sure any concerns they have. We've, I think, you and I have tried to reach out to a number of the abutters, and we've asked them to come and say, "Look, say what you, say what you think about the project." And if anybody doesn't like the project, sit with us. I, I mean, that, it's, again, it's, I, I've got a client here who's certainly willing to sit down with anybody, talk this through and, and look at how they can do this in a way that makes sense for the abutters. Um, I, I don't mind telling you, that's not always the attitude of every developer I've ever represented. So, um, I'm certainly happy to answer any of the questions that you may have. Um, at, at this point, I, I think I've probably talked long enough. Um, but then again, you invited a lawyer to a podium, so this is what you get.
Uh, one question that I have is the garage, with the, the current garage, is that going to be a unit for someone to rent? Or is that going to be lived in by somebody else?
No, it'd be, it'd be a rental unit.
So that's included in the, okay.
Yeah, yes. That's in the 10-unit counts, nine in the house and one in the garage?
Okay.
Yes.
Um, do any voting members have any questions first?
I do.
Got Greg?
So the drawings that were submitted with this application show three two-bedroom apartments in a now one.
Okay.
So unit six, change one, unit, the unit five.
I'm sorry?
All right, I just, because it says in the, in the Gazette, nine single bedrooms.
Which is, was the intent.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that this is, you see that.
And we would certainly agree to that condition. If, if, if the, the board approved, it would be approved as one bedrooms. Um, I apologize, I gave you the large copies and I kept me a small copy. And my eyes are getting old, so I actually had, I had a magnifying glass out this afternoon and I was trying to go through it and try to make sure, but I still couldn't read some of it, so.
Yeah, because this one has two.
The garage does, yes.
And this, so that would be, the way this is shown, it would be three two-bedrooms and seven.
Right.
No, he's saying it's not going to be, but I was just reading.
They're all going to be one bedroom?
Yeah.
It's nine one-bedroom.
It's not, not the, not the actual drawing.
And my other question was parking. So I see on the, originally the plans of the existing building, not on the floor plans, but is it 22 spaces?
Yes, I believe that's accurate.
And would you be assigning like two per building, two per unit? Would they be assigned to each unit? Like, you know, you know, one has spots one and two?
Yeah, my client's nodding. That's the normal course. We've looked at parking in a number of different ways as well. Um, there's, there's a way of moving the parking around the back of the building. If any of the neighbors thought that the parking, like, you, you, again, you're familiar with the property, you can drive and park right in front of it.
Yep.
If, if it looks better to the, the community that we plant that area and move the parking in the back, we can do that. The back of the property is very, very large. That's where the, the septic system is. We can put a parking lot over that if we need to and move the parking back there with something that we had discussed coming into this meeting, that, that might be something that, you know, folks who live next door may prefer. And that's, again, you know, we're all, we're willing to take any sort of comment like that and try to make it as best we can.
Then in that case, anyone would have to go down Sawmill Lane in order to get, to get to the parking?
Not necessarily. Go around the building.
That's a private, that's a private driveway. Sawmill Lane is a private driveway. It belongs to Mr. Melo. I'll power that property.
So around where the parking is, if this was to stay, you're going to put some type of plant in so that the headlights don't face, uh, budding properties where the cars will pull up the lights or fence or?
Yeah, we, we had talked about fencing is definitely something. I, when you do this, so often you don't know what the, the abutters want.
Well, I do.
No, no, it, but I, I'd rather hear from them and then it, it try to work with them to make it something they want. Uh, I, I've, I just constantly get, you know, different, different opinions of what type of fence and all of that sort of stuff. So proposing it and, and kind of foisting it upon them isn't necessarily as, as good as like hearing what they think about it and how they'd like it to be.
Kind of a question out of the ordinary, but is each one of these units going to have its own electrical meter?
That, I'll defer to.
Um, Greg, John, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I did, yes, I do. Thanks for, for asking that. Mr. Fredericks, this is Jonathan Gill. To your client, um, first question is, is there any construction that has started at this premises yet at all? There was a question mark addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals from another, um, committee in town suggesting that construction may have already started.
Okay. Mr. Gill, first of all, how are you, sir?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, it's good to hear from you. Um, no, there's no construction that's gone on in this project.
Okay, thank you. Second question is, because this, these units, as you've indicated, are one-bedroom units except for one, what is the maximum number of occupants you're looking at in the entire project? So if there's 10 units, are you looking for a maximum of 20? Are you assuming that, that somebody may have one or two children?
So the, the guideline on that, I believe, is you cannot have more than two persons in a one-bedroom apartment. I, I, I think there's, there's actually some guidance on that. You can't have more than two people in a one-bedroom apartment. In a two-bedroom apartment, I, I believe it's three, but there's a, I, I'm playing off a faded memory, but there is some guidance about maximum occupancy. But again, the, the idea here is, I mean, really, the two-bedroom in the garage is just because of the amount of floor space there. Um, I, I, I'm fine with working with the board to try to put a limit on, on occupancy and something like that because that, I, I believe that the state of Massachusetts already has some guidance out there to border healths and otherwise about how many people may be occupying certain types of, of units.
So the, is the assumption being, and obviously we may not have any say in this, but is the assumption being that based on what you were saying, the developer does not plan to lease any of the units to anyone who has minor children?
Oh, that, that, that's the intent just by what we're proposing. Um, the, the nine bedrooms, the nine, the nine one-bedrooms is, is going to foreclose really the, the issue of the children. So, yeah, there's, there's no way to do that. And that's something that, that would fall under the border health regulations. Um, I mean, I, I, I'm kind of searching. I don't, I don't know that we could fashion something to say that you can, we rent, but it couldn't be to a child. I'm, I'm not sure. I, I mean, we couldn't violate mass law or the, the applicable regs on this, but I, I also don't think that you just put that prohibition in. But again, I, I think the bedroom limitation itself serves that purpose.
So putting, putting on a different hat a little bit here, and I'm going to go partly with my ZVA hat with the question, but also with my ADA hat in town, which is whether or not any of these units are going to be handicapped accessible. And I say that because of Title III of the ADAX specifically, not Title II, which is the public access, but Title III, which is the public-private access. And in that component, because of the amount of construction involved here, I would be concerned whether or not any of these units will have handicapped access. And that would mean roll-in, roll-out as well.
Mr. Gill, I can, I can tell you that my client was nodding that yes, they would be.
The building itself would be handicap accessible, but, you know, the exact ramp and everything it needs to enter the building. And I wish they were doing maybe two, three units handicap accessible with the, the sinks and the, the columns, but are different heights in the units themselves.
So Mr. Gill, I, I don't know if, my client's not standing at the microphone.
Yes, I did, I did, Rob. I did hear of, yes.
Okay.
So my question is whether or not what is currently there for accessibility, because it was an older building, some of that may be to be retrofitted. For example, the ramp itself may not meet the current standard and so forth. Um, I heard what you said about handicap accessibility with regard to counters and so forth. Are you intending this to be at the access to be potentially to get to any unit or for specific units, one, two units set aside? How are you planning to, to make this happen?
As far as the building itself, the whole first floor would be handicap accessible to get into the ramp or what have you. There is one unit on the second floor. Obviously, there's no elevator there. That wouldn't be handicap accessible. But every other unit would be as far as the, the, you know, 36th doorway and the access or whatnot. As far as specifics for, uh, each unit itself, there's, there are guidelines for different height toilets and vanities, things like that. So I plan on doing a couple of units that way in the event, you know, somebody had a handicap that needs to reference.
So are you, what, how many of the units are you planning to theoretically, not saying that you have to rent to a person with a disability, but how many of the units are you planning to have with assess, with the assessable need for persons with a disability, counters, space, lavatories, toilets, et cetera?
We're going to do a minimum of two.
Okay, I'd like, I, that's, I think, unless that's written in the plan and I can't, I'm not, I'm out of state, don't have the plan with me. Um, that would be a condition that I would like to see put in there for, as well.
That's perfectly agreeable. My client's indicating that he'd be willing to do that, Mr. Gill.
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Um, before we turn it over to the abutters, do any other members on the board have any questions? Susan? Okay, so first, we're going to turn to the abutters. Um, if you don't mind standing, and just say your name for the record and your address before you state, um, any of your questions or concerns.
Come to the podium?
Uh, yeah, if you don't, if you don't mind coming to the podium, that would be great.
Uh, John Crawford, 1022 Center Street. Um, I, my only question, if this, we got a variance, is can it be put in there? What's to stop him from going higher once he gets in there, second floor, third floor? Can this be limited to the height that it's at now?
May I answer that? It, it is limited because the structure itself is non-conforming, so we can't expand the structure any more than it currently is.
We hear that all the time, Rob.
Okay.
I can remember when Mrs. Hagerty started that place. It was a small building out back. She worked out of her house. Kept getting bigger, kept getting bigger. Her house came down. Her son-in-law lived next door. I mean, it, it was always run, and you know what I mean? It, uh, helped a lot of people in town as a nursing home. And like I say, you know what I mean? Once we get our foot in the door, we push for this, we push for that. Well, if it's going to be his only change, it's only for what's there.
Right.
No more. I mean, I'm not trying to be a jerk about it and being envy, but I've been in the neighborhood a long time.
Yeah, and like I said, I want to, you know, I'll try to make the neighbors happy the best I can, but I'd be fine with deed restrictions and donor restrictions.
I don't think you can go up because some of that's a Cindabon Foundation, if I'm not mistaken. Some of it is. So structurally, you can't accept that. But we can put a condition in them.
If you put a condition in there, Greg, I'd appreciate it. You know what I'm saying?
Of course.
Anybody else? Any questions or comments?
Melissa Perry, 1115 Hyde Street, Dayton. Um, my, I guess my major concern is not necessarily worried about the school with nine children. We've had 200 houses down the road. I don't think the schools are a big issue with what's planned to go in. Um, how do I put this nicely? Uh, what type of clientele are you expecting to have in there? I mean, sorry, Rob, but I, the words came out of your mouth. You said something about a sober house.
No, so we're not.
I'm not saying that's what you said, but that word came out of your mouth and it stuck with me.
So, no, 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 no.
And I don't mean to be that way, but just curious.
We're not proposing, we're not proposing any of that. I can speak to the fact that people have contacted him to try to get him to do all kinds of things with the property. That's not what he wants to do. He wants to rent it out to 10 folks who are going to live there and he wants to get the renting because he wants to run a business. So I'm not going to dodgy that.
No, and I get it. I get it. We all have.
He does, well, one-year lease, so he's not looking for the month-to-month and now they can't pay and now he's out the door. He looks for a one-year lease. He does the background checks. He does the criminal, and then the credit checks. So he's trying to find the people who are going to be able to stay there and pay their bills and pay him. He's, we're not trying to do Section 8. We're not trying to do so. That's not at all what we're proposing. Now, I, I, what I, when I said that, he, he did a project like that.
Yep.
In Freetown. We're not, that's not what we're proposing in this. I was just trying to give the background of who he is, the projects he's been involved. He's a very sophisticated developer, but he's also, again, kind of one of my more favorite to deal with because he looks at what do we need? And we don't need something like that. We're best off with it being an apartment though.
Yep.
And that's, that's what we're trying to do.
All right, thank you. That just stopped.
Yeah, no, I apologize.
Anybody else?
I'm, uh, Daniel Fattato. I live at 896 Center Street, directly across from this project. Uh, my concerns are, is this a 40B project?
No.
It's not 40B?
No.
And is it going to be limited to a certain clientele of people age-wise, 55 and older or?
We hadn't proposed that. That comes in when you do a 40B project, that you, you try to position it that way. I'll, I'll be honest with you, having dealt with 40B, I, and I, I think you could probably back this up. So often when people do 40B and they put the age requirement in, they come in in a couple of years and ask to drop the age requirement because they can't market.
It's been happening in town of reference.
Right. And that's not what we're looking to do. And we're trying to come in upfront and honest and say, "Look, what we're going to try to do is rent for, to 10 people and..."
It's not considered low income or moderate income? It's going to be, uh, working type of people that are going to become the going?
Right. If they can't afford the rent, they're not going to live there. And I think that's the best way to safeguard the neighborhood.
I was affiliated with that property for over 50 years and the nursing home worked out well for us. We'd like to see an older clientele in there. Uh, 55 and older maybe, or even, even older than that, I suppose you'd have to have medical people in there then. It'd be a nursing home.
Look, I, I live on Middle Street. I, I know, I know the neighborhood. I know the, I, I had to go by it every day going to work. So I, I understand your concerns with the neighborhood. He shares it. Again, I, I find it to be a little bit phony sometimes when, when you do these 40Bs and say it's going to be 55 and older. And then you only find seven people who want to rent that in that age demographic. Then you end up back in here and when you came in, you promised something that you're no longer able to deliver on. So I, I, I don't like to necessarily say 55 and older because that might not be the, the folks who show up to rent it. So I, I, I mean, we know this, all the way around this town, there's a number of developments that started out 55 and older and they're not anymore. So that, that.
How, how does that be determined? They go back to the town petition?
They have to go back to them. They have to go back and request.
Because they can't rent the properties and they become.
Right.
Open to everyone.
Right. And that's, that's why, that's why, I, I mean, he, his, his thing, open and honest, this is what I'm trying to do. He's not, he's not sleight of hand, "Oh, let's say it's 55 and over. It gets approved. I come back in two years. All of these people aren't here and now it's just me telling the board. I only got seven people. Just give me the waiver." I, it's not what we're going to do. We, I mean, I, I think, and, and again, from my standpoint, the economics alone are going to ensure that we're renting to the right people that the town and the community would want there. Because he's going to rent it at a market rate, not a cut rate, not a 40B rate, not an affordable rate, a market rate. So they're going to have to be able to afford the rents that he charges or he's going to move on to somebody else. And that's going to ensure they've got a good job, they're doing the right things. And, and that's, it's that sort of thing that's going to preserve the neighborhood.
You know, 55 or older, even at that point, they're still working. They're not retired yet. These are people that are going, company going all the time. Under age 55, we're all there. They're going to be pulling in and out of there at two or three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not susceptible to that in that neighborhood.
Sure.
It's already the Southeast Expressway down there. We're looking at twenty more cars coming into that immediate area. It's so dangerous here now, you can't walk up the street.
I moved out of Middle Street because my son's, my son was a little boy and cars can burn it down Middle Street and I had to move. So I, I share your concerns with the traffic. Our, our thing is, and again, if we limit the number of bedrooms, you likely limit the number of cars, you know? So we're not gonna have teenage kids staying in the apartments and things like that. So that's, that's all built into the, the formula of, of saying one bedrooms. Because the, the less bedrooms, the less cars there will be.
Well, if it's one bedroom and it's a couple, there's gonna be two cars for a problem.
Yeah, we can remove that out, of course, yeah.
And the park in the back sounds like a great idea to me.
That's where we'll go.
Years ago, you know, as a nursing home, everybody, the visitors parked in the park. And employees parked on the side. Now, if you could get all that behind the building, I think that would be very helpful.
We were discussing that today. We were discussing that on the phone because we were, you know, we were trying to-
You want what you said?
I just gave him a sketch. Now you're gonna ask me to find it on the sheet.
It's nothing.
Oh!
To be more planted, they're trying also. So this, this would be the idea of if we moved, sure, the shade would work, that we, we do plantings in the front of the building and then see it going around back and then the parking would be in the back.
I see it, yep.
Really good.
That didn't even take it to that one. I think it even taken for that one.
Two thousand nineteen. I hated to see that.
We could go this way with it. The building here.
Yep, yep.
So you could see, do that and then put the building, uh, we could be parking this way.
That'd be very, much more acceptable than what we got here right now. You can have this one? All right.
So, so what, what I would see, if I can approach, what I was showing is, we had this done today, what the front of the building would be if we chose to move the property. So this would be Center Street. This would be that grass area you see in front and then you'll be in the parking there. I mean, that, that's something to my mind which is, you know, to your point, is that something you'd rather see?
It's also farther away from Somme Lane too.
One other question, you know, I'm not sure if I'm on top of this or not, but as far as two and a half goes, the town needs to have, what, ten percent of, uh, low-income properties?
For forty-B.
Are we there in Dayton?
Never gonna be there.
Never gonna be there. Does this fall, fall in that bracket?
It's, it's not forty-B, so no, it won't, right?
I wish I could help you out there.
I know. Trust me.
Mr. Logan, I tried to help once.
Yeah, we know, we know.
I'll sit back here.
Forty, forty-B written there, we're about four percent.
Any more questions for our comments from any abutters?
Jacqueline Olivera, nine twenty-three Center Street, direct neighbor. Is there like a giant fence that's gonna be put up?
I, second, I don't know.
What, what do you want to see? This is what I, when, when Greg asked me, I find that when I deal with the abutters, everybody has a different idea of what they do wanna see there. So we very much welcome your input of what you'd wanna see.
Um, so I'm a stay-at-home mom. I'm outside six out of seven days a week. Our backyard, the garage, looks directly over. Anybody on the second floor looks directly over. My kids are in the driveway. Those parked cars that you have, I think it's five spaces facing our house, directly into our living room.
Oh, you're right, okay, I see you're right now.
Yeah.
So she's, she's here.
Are you gonna keep those in this, this drawing or those, yeah, those would still be there?
So it looks like to me that she, she some of these five spaces, so that, that puts her right here.
So, man?
Yeah.
So, so this is, this was something that we were proposing, which is, this is Center Street? This would be the green area and then the building, so you are on this side?
Yeah.
Okay, so what we were doing is we were looking to move the bulk of the parking here and then we did have some parking here. So the question is, what, what would you want us to do there, I guess, is?
Well, I wouldn't want any parking there at all. I'd want it all in the back. But my concern is, so your driveway runs directly parallel to ours. And from time to time, I've always been outside when people are working over there. I met your father-in-law, he gave my kids towels.
Like, make it not, like, you get home, it's for the kids, taking away this.
I met anybody that works over there.
And move that one back there.
Everybody comes over and talks to me because I'm always outside. So all those people, even the landscaper sometimes, tend to veer into our side of the property. It's not a problem, but it will be a problem eventually.
Yeah.
I mean, I have babies, so they're, they're always outside. I want a fence, a big one.
They're, they're not in yes.
You have, you have area, you're ex, there's no shrubbery, there's nothing to sell.
Right, I mean, we can make clearance PR view, you can clear as a heart view.
I had young kids too, another big, but, uh, yeah.
I mean, I saw you when you bought the place, I watched the entire auction from my couch.
Just front row seats.
So, so I, I think, I think it's just worthy of writing a condition into the permit at that point. So what, what the zoning board can do is just literally take your comment and make it a condition of the permit. And if we're allowed to do anything there, say, you're allowed to do it, but you have to erect a fence to any sorts of-
The people that are gonna be, they're gonna want the same privacy you want, so we're gonna make that happen.
Right, as long as that happens. And the parking is in the back and, yeah, again, I have babies, so. And the construction is, at normal times, construction is.
See, and, and I, to your point, this, this is a guy who has staff. In other words, he has the ability to try to monitor the property. It's not like he's just one guy all by himself and you're gonna have to call the cops all the time. And he's there, he's a person who can, like, reach out to, talk to, as you know. So if there's an issue, you can reach out to him and he can address it with any tent that might be a problem.
I have no issue at all, like, give my personal cell phone, everybody can call the taxi, there's no issues, but I want it as well. But obviously, that's not, that's not the whole avenue.
Right.
So that northerly side, you're gonna be putting a fence from, uh, say, six feet back from the street and go the entire line down our property? Or just with a cospark?
I guess probably the, the entire line toward his tree.
Yeah, we had a fence there, but through other storm, it's come down, so it needs a fence. I think that's our fence, it's fallen down, so.
So probably I can do like a, like a-
Angle on the end. I just don't know where her driveway is in conjunction with that, but that's something.
Kind of parallel to, put the driveway there.
I'm home every day, so if you wanna-
But it might limit, it might limit the floor show from your couch.
My camera, so I see every day, so. That was it.
Thank you. Any more abutters or anyone in the audience has a question?
My name is Cory McCartney, I live at eight sixty-three Center Street. I just wanted to take a look at the parking, um, because I, we're set back, so the property is to my left, so our, I just, yeah, I'm just curious.
This would be Center Street.
Okay.
This is the area that, that I think we're now all moving towards, which is, this is the front of the building.
Okay.
Which we're saying we put a green in area here.
Okay.
And then we moved the parking into this area, and then those are the five that she was just addressing, which are on that side of-
Right, right, she's over here, right, so I'm over, and, okay. So it would be, yeah, so, okay. So that's where I have an issue. Because, so my backyard is my haven, my private spot, my trees, all around, okay? Very important to me, for my mental Stephen. So this, I don't want any trees taken out on that side. That is my backyard. There is a lot of wildlife, like, we get deer, we get everything back there, and they utilize that space because it's been not vacated. So, you know, nobody's there, so.
There won't be a single tree removed.
Don't take any trees out of here. And, yeah, that's my concern, because if they're gonna be, so they're gonna be parking towards my house, like, like, I'm gonna be in my backyard and our, we're, we are upper, our upper deck. Be like, I'm gonna be looking down at everybody and they're gonna be looking up and up. So I'm honestly, I want a fence because I don't want it to solve any issue because we're high up. So as long as you assure me that you are not gonna take any trees down, because I need them. And, yeah, that's, and, and, and really, it's screening people because, I mean, you know, I have a baby and I'm not, that's, you know, that is my biggest concern. We left Taunton to get away from what was sort of presented, like, it was gonna be just sort of the same what we, what we escaped from to be safer and private. So please just don't take that away. That's all I, that's all I-
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
We got someone else, sorry.
I have Brian Strange, I live at eight seven six Center Street.
I know some people here. I remember the look on your face when you won. It was like, I won, I won the auction, and then you're like, I won.
I guess you were there.
I was there, I've met you once, and I asked, what are you gonna do with it? I have no idea. Yeah, you had a lot of honours. Yep. Since then, every time like you were trying to clear the place out or whatever, I'd run over and ask, what are you gonna do? Just curious, what are we gonna do with it? I was hoping maybe businesses, nothing too crazy, not, I'm not talking, talking like strip joints and another pharmacy across the street or anything, but why not, um, why not some type of business or something, or a couple, renting it to businesses?
Well, I, I can address that. It, it's, it's, there's a legal element of this too, because of the prior non-conforming use. We have to make sure that we're not extending the prior non-conform use. So where it was a nursing home, if we try to go retail or someplace else, we give ourselves to a legal challenge to the law, that's, that's exacerbating the non-
I wasn't thinking retail, I was thinking more like a lawyer's office. Just saying.
I don't need any competition, right?
Maybe you want a bigger office.
I, I distinctly do not, I can tell you-
I'm trying, I'm trying, right.
Um, the, the, the long story short is, there, there's some, some, you know, technical elements of it that makes it more, more sensible. If you stay residential with it, it, it's, it's really lessening the non-conformity, keeps us in good standing. So that's why.
And I can appreciate the limiting the bedroom so that you don't have, you know, I mean, you can't tell people they can't rent if they have children, but by making it one bedroom. But I've probably been in tens of thousands of people's homes. I'm a retired firefighter and paramedic, and I've probably done that in like forty or fifty different towns in southeastern Massachusetts. Uh, working for a private ambulance company, and I have to tell you, one-bedroom apartments, I don't know, um, usually, single people, I mean, not to say if you're a single person, you're a bad person, but, um, it, a lot of times, you have to be careful. I mean, obviously, if it's not a lower income, if they're nicer apartments and you're asking a decent price, then that will make a difference. If you're not trying to make it a sober house, obviously, uh, anything like that, we appreciate that as neighbors and as a town. But I'm just a little concerned with the single, like, you, you said you had forty-five units in fifteen buildings? Is that right? So like three apartments, the average? Right, right. So, uh, switching this to nine single and, and one double, you know, like I said, I had my, I had some concerns about single, like-
So it's, it's most, that, that's, that's the residential ones. He has a lot of commercial options.
Okay.
So, you know, again, the, the building with the town area chamber of commerce is in, that's a building he owns and rents to them. Uh, there's a garage that he rents to. He's, he's got other commercial properties that, that he owns, that that's what he's doing. So he's, he's mixed and varied, so it's not just one thing. I, I, I may, I probably did an awful job painting him as a person.
I was just trying to figure, no, you didn't, you did a great job. But I'm just trying, I was just trying to figure out-
He's doing a great job by himself, I don't know why I'm here.
Going, going from, uh, you know, like, three units per building, I was just trying to picture that, if that makes sense, that some of the, some of the buildings might just have one occupancy because it's a business, I get that now. But I, I just had my concerns about single bedroom, like, you either have like a, a younger person that's gonna wanna party and come and go at all kinds of hours, or someone that has issues and can't live with anyone, like, you know, I don't know, single bedroom. Not, not everybody.
I have a different image. So when I, when I graduated law school, my mother got me a microwave for Christmas, I took the hint.
That was a hint.
Time to move out.
Absolutely.
I couldn't live in Dayton. I had, I had to go to town.
I understand.
And, and, you know, again, I, I had a job, I was an attorney, a grade. I couldn't rent any place in Dayton, not because I couldn't afford it, because of his name.
Right, I get that.
And that's where, that's where I think that, that this model is coming from, is that you could have younger professionals who aren't ready, you know, to your, to your simple, oh gosh, but hey, you know what? They ain't ready to buy the house and have the babies yet, so-
Or might be a younger couple on their way up.
It could be, it certainly could be. But again, the, so, I mean, you know, we, we've already talked a little bit about the forty-B. You do the forty-B bit or the affordable, that means that you have some markets, but some debt, lower rentals.
We don't want that.
This is market. This is, you have to make the income in order to, to pay your rent and your electric and, and do, we want to end up renting to a, a higher level of clientele than whatever a forty-B would be, just by the very economic nature of the project.
This is what we wanna hear.
That's why we're doing it this way. We don't wanna do a forty-B, we don't want, like, we, we, we don't wanna do any of this. We just wanna try to do something where by the very meaning of the market, it's gonna please itself. And that's, that's, I, I find that's gonna work probably best in this area. So, Mr. Chairman?
I hope so, I really appreciate that because, you know, as a neighbor, as a taxpayer and-
And I think by looking at, looking at the grass up front and the plantings and you really see a car coming go, it's gonna be a deal in the process.
That would be great.
This, this is a huge investment when I'm looking to lose money.
I, right, I hope, right.
So I, I hear everybody's put this sign, so.
Rent accounts off, so I'm looking, you know, more higher, and then I'm thinking, you know, it's close to forever, but, you know, probably, it's just, no, the professional-
And there really isn't a place, like you said, for, for people coming up to rent.
And the dynamics are changing where, I guess, well, you may have somebody that's, you know, forty years old that's still hasn't, you know-
Or divorced or whatever, whatever.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd really appreciate that, the parking in the back, just living across from a nursing home, I moved there in two thousand seven, the nursing home was going thing. And I'd hear shift change, you know, eleven o'clock at night, whatever it was, everybody coming and going. Uh, I'd really appreciate that if you did the parking in the back, I think all the neighbors would. Except for, I was just gonna say- I should say, except for her!
We're not sending any trees then.
No, well, we, yeah, that, Steve is gonna go in right and chase it on my backpack and-
The people, the people in the back, and we can't forget about them, as long as you leave the trees alone and everything, that's, 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 that's good.
Are we still gonna have the trash truck around five, four past five in the morning?
Yeah, that used to, that used to, yeah, I'd be like, great, do they have to come?
I don't think that has to be, uh, part of, I mean, I-
No, I mean, they gotta pick up the trash off, which you could give them, and they kind of laugh. Jesus, a nursing home, you know, I could hear the guy banging the container up to the house.
Because, you know, they have to, they have to shake it, you know, a couple of times.
But, but this also goes to the whole legal concept of lessening the non-conformity. What was there was probably worse for you from the standpoint of, of just stuff like that, that you don't even realize by its operation, it's annoying you a little bit. And we're hoping to try to make it slightly-
What's annoying me, having to bother anybody else?
I wasn't afraid.
It's almost like four thirty in the morning now.
Yeah, Ron, we're gonna have like, those, that's fine.
At least it'll be in the, in the back. I, she was asking about headlights and whatnot, and right across the street, yes, you see everyone coming and going. In the back, yeah, you're gonna see maybe people pull up, but it's not as bad as having everybody right across the street.
That was the thought, that was the idea of what we're trying to put together.
Okay, no, I, I appreciate it and I, I've been, I have been asking, what's going in there? And nobody seems, you know.
We keep it very secret.
I've only been over there, I guess so. No, I've only been over there a couple of times and every time I asked, it was like, hmm.
No, it's, it's something, I mean, I, I mean it, he, he's willing to talk to you guys. I mean, you, you've probably got the sense that he has talked to some of the other abutters. If we didn't get to you, that's kind of our fault, but again, if you have any-
I was asking.
Just approach me.
He, he wasn't there, he had a woman that was selling off things and cleaning out the place. I, I brought an article over telling you about what happened with the nursing home and how, you know, it's led to its demise and whatnot. They had no idea. But it, it served its purpose, it was, it wasn't too bad to deal with, it had, you know, its little quirks. I just don't want something worse than it. Better, better would be great.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Any more abutters, any questions?
My name's Mary Ann Souza, I live at nine fifty-five Center Street. I just-
Do you work, Miss Souza?
I work at Torres Insurance.
That's a business that I own just adjacent, like, she works with.
Um, I want to know if there's some way to get some kind of reassurance if you're successfully, not successfully able to rent them out to the people that you want to. I don't want them to come, come back a couple of years later and say, now we wanna change it and rent it out to, you know, over fifty-five and have a problem or Section Eight and have, because I, I don't want that near me.
The, the biggest, the biggest assurance we can give you on something like that is what they said, which is they don't wanna lose money. Now, the second thing that I can tell you is, if there's no units to rent in Dayton, I mean, there, there are some multifamilies, there are some multifamilies. How often do those come open? They never do.
No, same here.
And as soon as they do, they're gone.
Right.
So I don't think, I, 'cause, I mean, they're just, where there are no units, the demand for these are gonna be so high that I, I can't foresee that.
Um, I mean, I, you know, I, I can go in a million different directions and things, but really, I think the, the economy and, and the supply and demand
supply and demand are just Dayton and the housing market is gonna be a situation where they're gonna be successful because they're always gonna, probably gonna have a waiting list for people to call. So I, I, it, it's, that's the best answer that we can really supply until.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? Okay.
So, um, you're looking for some requests on some relief from the, uh, zoning board of appeals on article twenty-four sixty, the abandonment? What's the hardship there, Chris? All right, I went and screwed your brother.
Well, um, I mean, abandonment's a legal, legal term of art. So, I mean, you always have the issue with abandonment that.
Well, but the usage is abandoned after three years now. That's our comp by law. So there's, I'm trying to find the hardship where we can work that.
I, well, I can, I mean, I, I can give you, I can give you some, some case law that helps you as far as trying to find your way.
Sure.
So first, uh, I'm reading from a case Derby Refining versus Chelsea. And it speaks to, first of all, that abandonment and this, the abandonment or discontinuing or non-conforming use result from two concurring factors. One, the intent to abandon into voluntary contact, whether affirmative or negative. So I would suggest to you that, in, in what these, these cases all speak to is it's not just like, oops, we're not there anymore. There really has to be more than that. So when the bank forecloses, I think you'd, you're well within your rights to say, there's, there's a lack of evidence to determine whether or not they chose to abandon that use, or if they chose to market it to somebody else who wanted to come in to continue that use. I get the timing of it. It's not ideal, but certainly, I mean, you, you, you speak to the, you know, your job is to try to do what's right for these townspeople. You're listening to what they're saying. I'm hearing a fairly positive response. I think when you look at the case law, you can find a way through the abandonment issue.
So the septic system is, uh, considered outdated as of two thousand nineteen as well, right?
So I can give you a letter we had done from our engineer, assuming I didn't take it out of order, which I did.
Cause you plan on parking on it now, so there's gonna be some different fills and materials that we're gonna have to, you're parking on the leaching field, if I'm not mistaken. It's gonna be just outside it.
So I checked with the engineer and he threw something out, uh, specifically something like also like forty-five hundred gallons. It's eight forty-five hundred gallons a day.
Yep.
The number of bedrooms we're doing is only about fourteen hundred. And I guess it's rated like, like clockwork rates. We park the macro in the back in the tanks.
Cause, uh, I, I, I found something else. We used to go by bedrooms for septic systems. Now it's by room.
Yes.
Kitchen, living room. It's based on that and then it's divided by three is how big of a system it has to be. I just wanna make sure you guys.
But if you start considering thirty, there used to be a thirty bed, thirty bed unit, is what it had.
Right.
We're going down to ten.
To ten.
And then you start, you start figuring out everything else that, yeah, it's, it's, it, it, basically that engineering report says that we're, I don't know, somewhere almost in the magnitude of a third of the, the design, yeah. So it's, it, the, the septic system is well-designed for what we're trying to do.
And are we taking out the, uh, the, uh, grease, uh, stuff that's in the septic system that was there before?
So there's, on the second page, you'll see another letter from the folks who were servicing the, the system and it speaks to what's there. And I mean, that, I mean, again, that, that kind of demonstrates, that's got the, you know, commercial grade, if you will, septic to be able to, to treat with, you know, grease and so forth and so on.
Another thing, it's just, it's minor, but it's really nothing to do with what I'm really, where are you gonna have storage for any of these people?
Full basement.
Are you gonna make storage units for each unit down in the basement? And what about, like you mentioned about the, uh, trash area? You gonna have a combined area with a door? Cause we have a lot of animals, you know.
But definitely the fence, usually it's a ten-foot gate.
Yeah.
You saw on the side with the chain link with the, the slots in front of it, that thing, you know.
Certainly that can be added to the permit as far as the condition.
Uh, you, do you have anything else? I think Dave has something to read.
Yeah, go ahead, ask Dave.
I had the same thing.
Oh, the dumpster?
Yeah, I wasn't sure where it was going.
Oh, the abandonment, okay.
Yeah, I don't sure how that's, I mean, I'm trying to, this guy's gotta stop calling me Casey.
This is Zach, this is Jonathan. I have a couple of questions unless somebody else has a question for.
No, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Rob, what I'd like to suggest is it's, it's one thing for us to potentially vote on something and put conditions in, but at the same time, hearing what the Butters have said, hearing what was just suggested with regard, for example, to trash receptacle, et cetera. From my perspective, it makes more sense as opposed to imposing all of these conditions and then having to potentially deal with conditions later, to take this under advisement perhaps, and then have you, have your client, for example, get together with the Butter who wants the fencing, determine the length of the fence, the type of fencing, the height of the fencing. So that that's in, in, in a revised plan. Same thing for parking. Bring us back a revised plan showing where the parking is gonna be changing to. Show us where the trash receptacles are gonna be and how they're gonna be, uh, taken care of to prevent, you know, animals and so forth. And also the same thing for the Butter who is concerned about the trees and, you know, and wildlife protection. It would be nice to have your client get together with that person as well and stake out what areas are going to be protected first and then come back to us at our next meeting with a plan that has less condition and more likelihood of, you know, being approved without so many conditions. And added to that would be earmarking the units potentially that would be made accessible, whether, you know, one, unit three, whatever it might be as well, so that that's part of the master plan as well. That's my thought. I'd also like to hear from our counsel, Marguerite, as to what her thoughts are with either imposing potentially all of these conditions or having you come back with some of these revised first.
Okay, thank you, John. Uh, yeah, but that's one thing that I, obviously as a voting member, I wasn't prepared to vote on it tonight, especially without uh, so having some more updated plans with the bedrooms being fixed and, and I guess the other potential parking options as well. Are there any boards that you feel like, I mean, we need to reach out to? If you guys have any, any ques, do you guys have any questions that you feel like should be or could be answered by other boards? In terms of, or, or, or town members, like, uh, fire or anything like that?
Well, first off, I'm sure you've gone in front of the building department with this, already had a talk to.
I, I, I've spoken with Ms. Aguirre.
Yeah, so the fire department, they're gonna make, they're gonna wanna make sure they have the radius that reaches around the building. Is this building sprinkled?
Yes.
It is sprinkled now?
So the, I, did the fire department provide any comment?
Not that I heard, yeah. That's why I was asking, cause usually when this, when this come up, sometimes we do have stuff. Could, because it's come across their desk and they have brought stuff up. In this case, they hadn't yet.
I, I had asked. I just didn't know if that was an issue, a concern that had come up. That's why.
No, no, not yet, no.
And the board of health, um, obviously with those letters would help a lot with them to see that, but they bought a health to confirm the capacity of what you're about to do onto that would be another one I would be talking to. And is, is the two, the two-bedroom dwelling in the garage, that's something that, uh?
We actually had some things, right?
You do have some things.
That, that, that have, that have come through.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll let him go on.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so, well, one thing we have is from Diane Curtis, um, regarding the sewer. Uh, so she, so Carrie has sent something to her saying, good morning, a public hearing for a special permit will be heard by the CBA on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh for, uh, nine oh one Center Street. Uh, kindly review the application and provide any questions or comments at your earliest convenience. The only thing that she sent back was quote unquote, regarding nine oh seven Center Street, there is no public sewer in this area. Is the only written thing that we have from her, right?
From the sewer?
From sewer. That's the only thing that, only thing that from, that we have currently from her. And then, uh, from Todd, uh, peeling from the board of health, um, Carrie had asked him, could you have one in Dayton, uh, nursing home cease operations? And he said their license with the board of health expired on July thirty-first, twenty nineteen. So that's the only written correspondence we've had from other town, from other members of the town.
But we have heard from the board of health.
Just regarding that one question and then the only thing we've heard from his sewer regarding saying there's no public sewer in this area. So.
Sorry, I did send out two emails. One, the first time we're, the sewer department, and then I sent one out again last week as a friendly reminder. I can do, if we're gonna continue, I can certainly request another.
It'd be nice to see if the fire department makes sure, wouldn't have designed it, he's gonna come in as, able to get the apparatus around the building.
I can reach out to them directly as well.
Sure, as well.
Just so, it'd be nice to have that in the letter on there and then, um.
The more information we have, the more, uh, I would be inclined to, to give a, a vote on it, but, um.
I can have the engineer comment on that, that, the fire apparatus as well.
Right, and then I guess, like I said, any, any updated plans with, with the new bedroom count? And then if you're able to provide more, if there are more than one parking configurations you could do, I guess just to make it easier for us to visualize, but if there's just one, then we'll take that too.
Is there any other comments? I, I'm happy to address any of it.
Well, yeah, I.
I just wanna make sure I address all.
Before we hand it over to Marguerite, I do have one more. So the garage that you guys are proposing for the two-bedroom, so that one's possible to have children and things like that.
That's the one, that would, yes, yes.
So that easement that you got going off it now is non-conforming, it's fourteen point seven. We require fifteen. It's an existing structure. I get it. So you're asking for relief of that as well?
Well, where, where it's an existing structure, I don't, I don't think that we necessarily really.
Setbacks, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's an existing structure.
All right, and, uh, does it, did anybody look at the garage for structural reasons? I believe that's on CMU block two, isn't it?
It's on, it's on the slab.
It's on the slab.
We spoke to the engineer, the, uh, the sewer lab was pretty close to that, so there was no.
Okay, so then all, all the pitch would work? That's all I have at this time, but I really think we should open up to Marguerite. I got all the concerns and questions of all the Butters.
Do you have something, do you have something specific you wanted to ask her?
Well, I wanted to ask her about the article twenty-four sixty. Um, I'm having a hard time with that one and I just wanna see where the relief, I, I, I just, if you could answer, help me out with this one, because I'm trying to figure out where it is.
I mean, I, to be honest, I'm having a hard time with that one as well. So, you know, Rob, I heard what you said with regard to, um, there had been an abandonment or they had stopped using it as a nursing home. They lost a permit. I don't know if that was the board of health permit or something else in twenty nineteen. I think that needs to be in the record for the board to see. Um, it's, the zoning bylaw says two years. We're four years potentially from that. I'm happy to have you brief what you talked about, that case, and, and have you make an argument and review that. I'm trying to understand that myself. Um, I'm also trying to confirm, and I think we have that confirmation, but maybe not in the record formally. Is there any alteration to the structure that's being proposed that would be, result in?
Footprints or anything like that?
Yeah, okay. So none of the not, the existing non-conformities are not going to change. Is that right?
Right.
And you're not making it more non-conforming in terms of the structure?
No, the structure, the structure is staying as it is, because as you point out, it already is, is non-conforming, so we cannot exceed the, the footprint. That goes back to his comment of, you know, we don't wanna see you make it bigger, well, we can't, because as you point out, the reg does not allow that.
Yeah, I guess I was just trying to understand why you were asking for a special permit from twenty-four thirty.
The meeting with the, the zoning enforcement officer, this is how he wished proceed?
Okay.
I, the way, the best way I can interpret it, and, uh, he's not here, is where it was a prior non-conforming use, that's where I, that's where I believe he wanted to, to get the special permission.
Right, I just don't, I don't personally see how twenty-four sixty, I think twenty-four sixty creates a problem for you, but I'm willing to certainly have you brief that. I'm also not sure that the special permit is the route you can take to avoid twenty-four sixty. I'm also not sure that there's an option in the zoning bylaw for that to happen by variance either, so that's the struggle I'm having.
Yeah, there's a process, there's a process problem in it and I think that's where I think the, even talking with the zoning enforcement officer, it's like, how do you kinda get there? I mean, if, if you, if you come to the conclusion that twenty-four sixty doesn't apply though, the special permit would. Because at that point, if you have just a non-conforming use, then it, then it is reg, it's regulated in, was it twenty-four twenty, I think? Which is the non-conforming use section, which does speak to, um, yes, twenty-four twenty, I'm sorry. The board of appeals may award a special permit, so.
Yeah, so that was gonna be my other question. Has there been a special permit awarded, I'm sorry, in the past to the nursing home? Do you know?
No, because it, it predated.
It predated that provision?
The history of this property goes back so, so far that it, it's prior to the, the, uh, adoption of the bylaws. So that's where it's, it's a pure non-conformity in that, that context. So from, from, when you go from there forward, you know, again, if you get to the point where you, you can say twenty-four sixty doesn't apply, a permit under twenty-four twenty is appropriate.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I can follow that logic. I'm interested to see what you wanna brief for twenty-four sixty. I think it's the right questions to be asking. I also uh, do agree that the idea of putting in a revised plan so there's fewer conditions, you're able to show what you're talking about makes sense.
We can, we can change the, again, a lot of this stuff, I mean, and I'm fine if you wanna have a, a Butters meeting or however you wanna try to, we, we can do something like that where we can say, hey, just come to the office at this time and, you know, I, we have the Butters list, so I can just send out a mailing just saying, come to the office at this time and let's, let's sit down with whatever the revised plan is and try to adopt whatever recommendations folks have. And that's, I, I do get your point that that does clean up the, the permit.
Right. And I think it'll also help the board make some of the findings that it's gonna need to make, um, under the special permit. So.
That's where it was getting confusing. I was just trying to figure that out. And the other thing, I know it's really not our board to talk about this, but usually when you have an apartment house, lighting bothers neighbors. So if we can just make sure the lights ain't shooting across, directed down to the ground.
Like a spotlight or floodlight?
Yeah, well, yeah, I've ran into that a lot of times and, um, it's just something that was detrimental to the neighbors, you're not blowing them out, looking in their windows, you know? Stuff like that, but, uh.
All right, so that being said, I will make the motion that we continue, uh, for our development LLC to our next meeting, which would be July twenty-fifth.
I will be here, I will be here.
That note was fine, yeah. Is there, is there a second?
So I'm not gonna be at the twenty-fifth meeting. I don't know, I mean, you can certainly have that and have a further discussion.
You two need to deal with before we have our.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with briefing it. I mean, you and I discussed it trying to do, do something prior. I, I don't know if you feel like you need to be here on opinion letters.
I don't know where the board was going with that. That's why I just wanted to point that out.
Hey, if, if you can supply anything.
I don't know that I'm gonna be able to, if he briefs it, I don't necessarily know that I'm gonna be able to review it in time either. I'm.
There'll be other stuff to discuss by that meeting anyway.
But if you wanna still have a July twenty-fifth meeting to talk about the other pieces and we can.
All the stuff on the garage.
Resolve the rest of it.
That's, that's fine. Okay, so then is there a second for that?
I'll second that motion, the twenty-fifth of July.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, Zachary Carron.
Aye, Greg Logan.
Aye, Jonathan Gale.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Can I keep this one?
Uh, I would actually prefer to cut all.
Okay, that's what I wanted, yeah. These are gonna go to you. That's good. According to the record, it shows it's not counted for the requirements, yeah.
Keep in mind, we're not done yet. We just got, we'll let the crowd care of, but we do have another thing to discuss.
So Dyson Woods is online when they're on.
If you don't mind, continue the discussion outside. We're still conducting the meeting, so if you can just continue any discussion outside. Excuse me. Excuse me, discussion, outside, we still have a meeting, sorry. Actually used it. Excuse me, we're still, I just wanted, we can't continue side discussion about this case yet, sorry.
Were everybody together?
Well, I wanted them to go. So anyway, I didn't mind the discussion, but we're still in a meeting, so we couldn't have this going on. Okay, so the next thing is to review discussion act, Dyson Homes LLC for Dyson Woods subdivision regarding release of funds under the performance agreement. And I do understand that they are with us online, on, whatever you wanna call it.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Figaro for, uh, Dyson Woods, Jake Sol, the original developer.
Go ahead. Yep.
Um, so, um, Attorney Mitchell and I had a, a discussion, it will run now, um, between yesterday and today. Um, just giving an update on where we stand. giving an update on where we stand with the requests. Originally Attorney Mitchell requested some information from our client. Our client originally turned over the development, the moment up to the association back in 2018. The other question that she had asked was, when did the, when was the subdivision completed? And this was, from my research, it looks like GZA Environmental Engineers confirmed that the subdivision was substantially completed via a letter dated September 8th, 2021. And now to the more important items, that Attorney Mitchell requested the groundwater discharge permit, according to the current 2012 groundwater discharge permit, I think there might be some misperception as to the expiration date on that. The expiration date on the first page says January 31st, 2017, in the body of the document itself, it says it expires 15 years from, from a specific date. And then we also have an email confirmation from, her name is Margaret Sullivan from the DEP, confirming that the permit didn't expire until May 8th of 2022, and that's well after our client, Mr. Jay Zola, really pushed control to the HOA Association at Dyton Woods. I did contact BDO Engineering, who is current engineering on working with the HOA, and he confirmed by phone call earlier this client that their firm is not working on a renewal for the groundwater discharge permit, they haven't been retained for that. They suggested using the original engineer, GAF, who was our client, sun engineering partner. But it looks like the board member that I have been in contact with the past month or so, confirmed by email later this evening, that they are going to be hiring BDO Engineering to apply for the renewal permit, and to get that process going. And then regarding the finances, I did confirm also with this board member, his name is Jason White, he's on the board for the association, he confirmed that the treasurer is currently updating the balance sheet for $45,000 that was put into FAM for the maintenance of the system at Dyton Woods. He confirmed that they have the $45,000, they are just waiting to update, provide us with a balance sheet, and I requested this information about three weeks ago from him, and he did respond this evening around 6 o'clock, that his treasurer was working on it. At this point, I'm not quite sure what else our client needs to provide in order to get funds released. I think it's pretty evident by all the work that I've, I've shown here today, that he's pretty much done everything that he can in his power, it really is in the control of the board right now, and like I mentioned, he really pushed control back in 2018, he stepped down from the board, so on, trustee, the association as well, so I think it would be important to maybe try to get in contact with someone from the, from the board of the association, to have them participate in this meeting, to have them give us a better update on where they stand on these items in order to have the funds released to our client, assuming again that the board is satisfied with the, with the Dyton Woods line proposed. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much all the information I have. I did speak to Attorney Mitchell earlier today, asking for a continuance, just to see if I can get more information from the board members, provide with that balance sheet that is very important for the zoning board to see, but they still haven't provided that information, and I've been requesting for about three to four weeks now.
Okay, Marguerite, do you have any comments on that?
So I did have a email correspondence with Attorney Cordero, I did share with her just that I asked if she would be attending tonight to provide an update to the board, and she said she would, and I explained my conflict for the next meeting. I don't actually have a lot of the supporting documents, I have no reason to believe that they don't exist, but I don't have, like, the emails from, I think she said Margaret Sullivan, showing that the permit expired on August 18th, 2021, I think that would be something that is necessary for the file. I will take a look, I'm not sure, I, I've had a hard time hearing you, Attorney Cordero, a little bit, when you just said it right now, that there was something about 15 years within the body of the permit, so if you wanna just send me, send me where that is, I'll, I'm happy to look at, into that if that's, if that's the case. I know we were both, when I talked to Attorney Corey before, we were both assuming it ended in 2017, I'm glad to hear that it did not. I know we're waiting on that funding balance around the $45,000, I have no reason to think it wasn't there, but there was supposed to be yearly accounting provided to the town, and I said, "Look, we can't make that, we can't create something now that wasn't given," but I think we need to have something in the board's records that shows that there was funding of some sort of maintenance provided. I don't know if that's the only maintenance that was funded or not, but a balance sheet, current amount, so that if there's ever a question down the road, the town has it in their records, that there was, that was provided, and that did exist, and it should have been used. And then, you know, I, I agree that it would be helpful to have someone from the Homeowners Association present, I think you could certainly ask for a letter to be sent to them, but it is really the developer who's asking for the release of these funds. And if you wanna just forward to me the email you got from the developer, or the Homeowners Association, that says that they are aware of the groundwater discharge permit or something along those lines, I think that's gonna answer my last point, my last area of concern. That being said, I had issued a letter back in March, at the time, it was based on the assumption that I would be hearing from Attorney Corey a little bit quicker than I ended up hearing from him, but I had indicated that the board had, that they have two releases in front of them, one is for, well, the main release is to release everything but the $5,000, which had to do with these legal issues. I had indicated in that letter that I, the board, the, or the developer had complied with everything they needed to do to get all but that $5,000 released, however, I thought that the board could condition that release on getting all of this taken care of, because how else are you gonna ensure that it is taken care of? It's really, you could do that if you wanted, or we could wait and go to one more meeting, because it sounds like we're almost there, and just have an approval to release everything.
I think one more meeting is best, considering we can't meet until July, we can't meet with them in July anyway, so that gives even more time to, to get what we need, so, that's how I feel, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it may make sense to ask the Homeowners Association to come in, only because you now know there's a groundwater discharge permit that, and this is not the devout, this is not Dyton Woods issue.
No, no.
But there is a groundwater discharge permit, they don't have any obligation to come before you, because you don't have any control over that, but at least to have a conversation with them, and, or ask them to come in and speak to the building inspector, or somebody in town that might oversee, I don't know exactly who that would be.
It would hurt Carrie, if you don't mind trying to find, find a contact person for them.
So that would be one of the, what, all three of the trustees, right?
I can provide Attorney Mitchell with contact with Jason White, an email I can send for tomorrow along with the support documents.
Okay, I can forward that on then.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it sounds like they're aware of it, at least now through some of this outreach, but it is something that you don't wanna have expire in town, it's an ongoing development.
Right.
And I can easily see how that, those types of questions could come back to the board, so at least if you show that you would, you've made some attempts to try to have communication with people about it. Again, there's no obligation, the only request before you, and the only authority you really have is over the Dyton Woods developer under the 40B.
Right. Who are the voting members on this?
Susan, Zach, and.
I knew it myself, yeah. So, it, it looks like the best course of action, in my opinion, is to approve the continuance to the next, well, not, for the next meeting, to the August 22nd meeting, that's the one that Attorney Mitchell can attend, and it will also give them more time to get what they need together, so. So is there a motion to continue to the August 22nd meeting?
Motion to continue Dyton Woods to August meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
If you stick your names for the record, because we're on Zoom.
David Phillips.
Aye.
I'm Susan Pritchard.
I, Zachary Karen.
And if, if I get that information in sufficient time, I'll just send an updated letter that would indicate approval to release the entire fund, so, Maya, if you wanna be aware of that, maybe you might wanna draft a alternative amendment that would cover full release, and we can, the board can vote on one of the two.
Absolutely, yeah.
If you wanna send that over, that would be another, another option.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there any public input?
It's late.
Hearing none, seeing none. Did I assume, any correspondence, Carrie? All right, approval of the meeting minutes from May 30th, does everyone have a chance to look them over?
I have.
Any comments or edits, anything you made? No?
Nope.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 30th, 2023?
Motion to approve the minutes, the meeting minutes from May 30th.
Is there a second?
A second.
Make sure you say your names, all, all, sorry, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, not, not say your names. Roll call.
David Phillips, aye.
Zachary Karen, aye.
Jonathan Gale, aye.
Oh, wait. Greg Logan, aye.
All right, anything else you guys wanna discuss, anything come up, anything?
No, I think, I know we can't discuss cases, but I think everything went well tonight, got a lot of public input on the case, and.
Nice to hear that, yep.
You know, so.
Great.
All right.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, Greg Logan, I make a motion to adjourn.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Greg.
Aye, David Phillips.
Aye, Zachary Karen.
We'll get it.
Cable all set.